All right, it is 6:30. I called this meeting of the Alamo County School Board for September 24th to order. And coming out of our closed session, Mrs. Carlson, do you have a motion?
I do. Chair Page, I move that the board certify by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, are considered in the closed meeting.
Second. Okay, it has been moved by Mrs. Carlson and second by Mr. Alcaro that we certify that we only talked about what was in the original motion to go into closed session. Is there any discussion? Okay, Ms. Johnston, could you take the roll call on that vote, on that motion, rather?
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes. All right, the motion carries. And since this meeting is virtual, this document will be occurring in our minutes. The minutes of this meeting should reflect that this meeting is being held electronically pursuant to Virginia State Law and Alamo County ordinance because the COVID-19 pandemic makes it impractical and unsafe to assemble a quorum physically in a single location. The meeting is being communicated to the public electronically through Zoom and live on the Alamo County Public Schools website. And public comment may be offered through the Zoom waiting room feature in accordance with the school board's protocol or by written submission. We will now have a moment of silence. All right, prior to our approval of the agenda, we will have introduction and mic check by each of our board members. Dr. Kate Acuff.
Kate Acuff, Jack Jewett District.
Jan O'Alcaro.
Jan O'Alcaro at large. And if I may, Ms. Johnston, would you please send a link to the Zoom call to Melanie Burkhardt? Sorry.
Okay. All right, so Melanie is not included yet. All right, Katrina Carlson, vice chair.
Katrina Carlson, Rio District.
Judy Lee.
Judy Lee, Ravenna District.
Ellen Osborne.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
And I'm Graham Page, Samuel Muller District. And I don't guess that Melanie has joined in yet, right? Do you have any clue as to that, Mr. Alcaro?
Correct. I just received a text that she hadn't gotten the link. And so hopefully, Mrs. Johnston is sending that to her. And I'm just trying to alert her to that now.
Okay. All right. All right, moving on along then, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Alcaro, second by Dr. Acuff, that we approve the agenda. Any questions on the motion? Any discussion? If not, Mrs. Johnston. Ms. Johnston might be.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes. All right, so the motion carries. We now need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Acuff, second by Mr. Alcaro, that we approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Okay, if not, Mrs. Johnston?
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes. Yes, my spacebar is not working.
Mr. Alcaro, oh, all right, caught you. Mr. Page?
Yes. Okay, is that it, Ms. Johnston?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, so the motion now consent agenda is passed. We're now ready for public comment. So vice chair, Mrs. Carlson.
Yes, I will start by reading the public comment guidelines. The school board wishes, excuse me, the school board invites and actively seeks the public's input in the matters relevant to school board governance and provides for time during its business meetings to hear from Alamo County residents and community members. The school board wishes to maintain appropriate meeting decorum so that persons can observe and hear the proceedings of the school board and that attendees online are not subject to inappropriate language and conduct. As my son, I'm sorry, is crying in the background, you know, he waited until it was my moment to speak and this is when he's doing it. So if you hear him, it is all right, my husband's dealing with it. As authorized by ordinance of the county of Alamo, the school board will hold its meetings electronically during COVID-19 pandemic. The school board is nevertheless committed to encouraging public comment despite its need to meet on a virtual basis. For this reason, there will be two ways for the public to provide comment. First, as always, written comments may be submitted to the school board clerk prior to the start of the meeting and they will be given to all the school board members for review. And as so long as the school board holds its meetings electronically, members of the public wishing to provide public comment during the school board meeting may sign up online by 2:00 PM the day of the meeting. Before electronic public comment starts, I'm going to announce the order in which your speakers will comment. I'm actually going to, there's 11 speakers, so I'll just announce the first three. Each speaker's access to public comment will be activated when it's that speaker's turn to provide comment to the members of the school board. Speakers are going to be notified when they reach the two-minute mark and at the three-minute mark. It is me doing the notification and it's generally just me waving when you're at the one-minute mark and then waving when it's time to stop. Speakers during the meeting are those submitting written comments should state their name, address, or magisterial district. Further, speakers should limit comments to those matters that are relevant to school board governance or the operations of the school division. And lastly, although the school board will not respond to comments made during the public comment period, school board members may address comments at the end of the meeting agenda under other business. And with that, the first speaker is going to be Jen T. W., the second speaker is going to be Jeff Handler, and the third speaker is going to be Tara Ilgner. So Jen, if you are on, it is your turn.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I just want to thank you for taking the time to hear me just speak and express some concerns. I want to start by thanking all staff and families for the time, patience, hard work, and flexibility. Our two sons are in elementary school, pre-K and second grade for the virtual start. I appreciate the thoughtfulness, attention to detail, and concern that their teachers and schools have shown. Our family also appreciates the cafeteria and bus staffs for daily meals via buses daily. The learning materials available that we pick up also help supplement and add to their CSO learning and Zoom class meetings. Our family is finding what works for us and we're excited to keep learning and engaging with teachers and classmates. I'm also an educator for Alamo County Public Schools. This is my 14th year with Alamo County. I'm a collaborative high school special education teacher. I just wanted to share that my two different co-teachers and I have been forming great relationships already with students and families. Our Zoom classes are also successful and engaging. The attention to detail and creativity is evident. I've even had a new student, a ninth grader, call me on the phone to share a piece of work that she was proud of for another class. This is one week after meeting me. It just made me happy that she felt safe and interested to call me. But now I just want to share my concerns and fears for moving into Phase Three prematurely. And this kind of reminds me of my son's assignment about the power of yet. It's concerning to hear news of educators of varying ages who are not only becoming exposed or sick, but dying. College campuses, even in our own community, are places with increasing positive COVID cases and exposures. I feel that acting hastily and reopening before it's safe to do so and there's a vaccine available will push things back negatively. We should wait to vote on moving up in phases when it is safe to do so and cases are not steadily rising in our community and state. Teachers and staff have spent time doing extra PD to prepare to be more successful virtually and to get families and get more familiar with a variety of technology and online resources. Students and families are being asked for feedback so that changes and modifications can be made to make future lessons better and more engaging. We're putting extra time and energy to make this virtual start work. I want to close with the reminder that we're all in this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. The next speaker will be Jeff Handler.
Hi. I am a resident in Alamo County and I appreciate the opportunity.
Jeff, I don't know if you are Mr. Handler, I don't know if you can hear us, but you're very choppy. I don't know if you can find a better connection and we can come back to you after the next comment, perhaps?
Yeah, I'm not sure whether we've lost him.
Yeah, I don't know if it's my connection or not, y'all all look frozen as well, so I can't tell. But how about we skip ahead to Tara Ilgner? And Jeff, Mr. Handler, if you're still there, we'll try you at the end. Thank you. So Tara, if you are here, it is, we'll move on to you.
Hi, good evening. So I'm a citizen of Charlottesville, resident of Charlottesville. And, but I just had a question about the HMSA and the Mesa Special Education Programs through Alamo School. So I understand that city children are not eligible for consideration for these Alamo School academies. And I just wanted to understand why. I didn't realize this wouldn't be a question and answer sort of situation, so I'll just throw all my questions out there and you guys get to them as you can. But my questions are this. I, so I understand there may have been segregationist policies in the past that kept downtown Charlottesville away from the Alamo School, but is that still the policy? And if that's not the real reason why Charlottesville city kids can't petition or apply to attend Alamo Schools, is it because their families are not contributing taxes? In which case, why is tuition not an option? If the issue is that there are too many kids in Alamo, wouldn't the application process allow the academies to regulate their size? So I'm just not sure I understand whether it's a size of the class issue or a funding or tax issue or segregationist issue. I just don't know what the reason is for keeping that completely inaccessible to city kids. So my kids are residents of Charlottesville, as I said. I work at UVA in the Earth Sciences Department and in graduate school for atmospheric chemistry. My kids are bright, but there are also lots of other kids here in the city who would, underprivileged children who would really benefit from this option. So basically, what I'm asking is, is this separation necessary or just by preference? That's all.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Ilgner. The next three speakers will be Erin Wise, Akenbaum, Kellen Squire, and then Debbie Stollings. So Erin, or Ms. Wise, Akenbaum, if you're there, it is your turn.
Thank you, school board, for doing what you do, volunteering massive amount of time and energy. And I'm sure every time you go anywhere, everybody's on you. I, we all know that we have confirmed cases here the first weeks of Phase Two right here in Alamo County. We all know the cases in Virginia are on the rise due to one big factor being UVA. Why would anyone even consider putting children's lives, their families, educational staff lives on the line? We only know it's dangerous to do so. By the way, I teach at Alamo High School in special education and government. I want to read what a senior wrote to me today, and he gave me permission for me to share it with you tonight because it was too late for him to get on. This is from Josh Francisco to everyone about opening up schools before any form of effective medical advancement for the purpose of combating COVID would lead to nothing but disaster and is a move that is begging to get everyone infected. The concept of herd immunity is also worrying because not only is COVID an extremely painful experience, as testified by my friend in Italy that actually currently has it, but also you're not guaranteed to survive. My father, who is a nurse, has told me a true story here in UVA that a woman had COVID once before and is now recovering for the second time. And he specifically says, "I'm not too fond of the idea of dying, coming close to dying or being afflicted by something that is extremely painful. I don't think anybody else wants that either." I ask you as a member to really carefully look at what the Alamo Educational Association has laid out, these are my words, not his now, measurable, reliable benchmarks that can guide the school board in deciding when to move between phases. It's not okay for all this responsibility to be sitting in your lap. And I saw it on different times, you're saying, "Oh, should I open, should I not open?" Well, my goodness, you laid out exactly what each phase looks like, but it can't be just like nine weeks. And then it's going to magically disappear. An arbitrary nine weeks in one phase, then go to the next is not acceptable. You need to use science and data and look at the experts. I can only see that that's the way we could move forward. And it would help you to say, you know, if you don't like what Alamo has laid out and they're very specific, the Education Association, and it seems like you have, but make your own and make it clean and make it with CDC guidelines and, you know, and they've done that. So I just ask that you would really highly look at that. And by the way, I am teaching at Alamo High School and it is really working. I don't know how it works in the elementary, but I know we have more kids attending than before. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wise Akenbaum. The next comment is going to be from Mr. Kellen Squire. Mr. Squire, if you're on, it's your turn.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I appreciate the time this evening to chat with y'all. I got to give my hats off to everybody in Alamo County, public schools, all the staff and everybody, the teachers that are making this work. We've got two kids, we've got a child at Baker Butler, another one at Jack Jewett, and it's been fantastic as far as with as much, the minimal amount of resources y'all have gotten and to be able to make it work as well as you could. Our first grader, you know, he's having a tougher time. He just loves being in school with friends and stuff, but, you know, we balance that with being in the emergency department and things are still tough. Supply lines, they haven't really bolstered them at a federal level. So we're not any better off, I don't know, a single hospital of any of my colleagues that work at there, back to single-use PPE, you know, appropriate mask supplies and things like that. In the Charlottesville area, it's been, last week, I think, the university emergency department effectively shut down for half a day. They went on divert because they were so busy, they couldn't take any more patients, which obviously, there's only two hospitals in our area, so people have to go somewhere. But, and that is with, we had a surge in July and August and it was, it was not a fun time. And so we're off of that. But obviously, with the weather changing, you know, we don't know what's going to happen. There's a flu outbreak, I was reading in San Francisco today. We were hoping we might escape that. The southern hemisphere largely did, but, you know, that's a gamble we have to take. Whatever you decide, we just need to take all that into consideration and that the fact that the virus seems to be spread primarily through the air by airborne vectors. I don't know that I've seen a confirmed, I don't know that I've personally seen a confirmed case of like an outdoor transmission. I'm not saying that's not possible, clearly, but, you know, people are outdoors and away from each other, you get a lot of ventilation, it's a lot safer and it gets a lot harder to do as we go forward. Now, just to make sure that whatever you decide to do, that you're keeping all of that in consideration, because if we have to hit the brakes again and we should probably have a plan to do that, by the time we do hit the brakes, you know, it takes two or three weeks to slow down, if that makes sense, and catch up. And, you know, it's the emergency services folks that are going to be sort of the brakes for that. So, you know, we're coming at it from two ways, both as a family that works in emergency services and with kids that we'd like to be back in school. So it's tough. And if you guys just make sure you take that into consideration as you go forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Squire. The next speaker will be Ms. Debbie Stollings.
Hi, thanks, everybody, for your hard work. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Debbie Stollings. I am a second grade teacher at Agnor Hertz. I graduated from college and came to work for Alamo County, and this is my 31st year. That being said, I am all at Alamo County. That being said, I am in that age group where COVID is something that worries me. I am in that medical group where my doctors filled out all my ADA forms and I cannot return to a building. This virtual start has been amazing. I don't know, many teachers that won't tell you that this has gone better than we ever thought it could. And that doesn't mean that we haven't had technology problems and Wi-Fi problems and problems. But the bond that I have already built with my children, I can't imagine in November losing the ones that go back into the building. I can't imagine that. And I don't think it will be good for them either because we've bonded under these pandemic circumstances and we're important to each other. And we're learning and we're learning together and we're having fun. I know these parents at three weeks better than I have ever in years because they're sitting beside their kids, because they're walking behind their kids, because they're checking on their kids, because they're popping into Zooms to say, "Hey, Ms. Stollings, I need help with..." We text, we email. Communication couldn't be better. It just couldn't be better. I am speaking for myself and I know that everybody has a different point of view with that, but the majority of teachers I've heard from, it's been a very positive opening. So I'm asking you to really think about all of those kinds of things about how it's going to affect the kids. I'm asking you to really think before we move into Stage Three. And you're welcome anytime to pop into my Zoom class. I think you'd love what these little kids have to say about things. And I appreciate your continued hard work. And maybe I'll see you for 32.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Stollings. The next three speakers are going to be Bo Odom, Catherine D. Atley, and Maggie Johnson. Bo, if you are on, it is your turn.
Hi, thank you so very much for having me. My name is Bo Odom. I'm a parent of a first grader at Greer Elementary, so we're in the Jack Jewett neighborhood. And really, sincerely, I want to thank our first grade teacher. She has been incredible. We think she's fantastic. She's been working incredibly hard. When issues arise on Zoom, she's seeking to pivot to the next best option. She's sweet, she's kind, she noticeably tries to care for each child present on Zoom. I assume she's a lot like Ms. Stollings. And I would hope you'd all look up Archer's first grade teacher and give her a raise and give all these teachers a raise. But I do want to say that, well, we have a first grader and I can only speak to that experience, but I think it's really imperative that you know what that experience is. And I believe Ms. Stollings when she says that it has been a good enriching experience for the children and they have a bonded relationship. But I would argue that this experience is not working for my first grader. I don't believe students are learning, our daughter is not learning. I believe it's enrichment. I'd urge you to visit any first grade Zoom class. It's a bit of pandemonium, distractions abound, and we knew that was going to be an issue, but distractions compound with little attention. First graders can dedicate to YouTube videos and whiteboards that are unfocused and nine different other students continuously unmuting and forgetting to re-mute and continuous background noises, they add to the cacophony. And even if one student is over eager, they end up dominating the questions that are asked to the general class and answering the question before my daughter has an opportunity. And I want to be real, I mean, these are first graders, these are first graders, we shouldn't expect the kind of self-control that is necessary for an online format. I just want to say that I don't believe my daughter is receiving the attention that's necessary for learning at this age. I echo again how marvelous I think my daughter's teacher is, but this experience is an education, I would say it's enrichment. Yes, she's learning social cues, she knows what a mute button is, and she's getting ever so personal look at the range of privilege in this world. And I'm really, really grateful for those things. I know that we have an incredible amount of privilege in our household, we have good internet, we have a quiet place to retreat, we have two parents with flexible schedules who can be one of those parents in the background, but I can't even imagine what this experience would be for those without the privilege that we have. But in reading and math and particularly in writing, my daughter needs so much help. She's already tested and placed in remedial help in kindergarten. This is not a format of education for first grade. And it seems that the education that's necessary is simply impossible over Zoom. They are learning to enjoy and appreciate, but they're not practicing any skill building, the skill building that's necessary. So thank you so very much for taking my comments.
Thank you for sharing that, Mr. Odom. The next speaker is going to be Ms. Catherine D. Atley.
So hi, my name is Catherine D. Atley and I teach kindergarten at Meriwether Lewis. And like many of the teachers in the county, I want nothing more than to go back to the classroom and be with my students, but I only want that when it is safe for everyone. When I read an AEA email stating that the county was planning on proposing we go to Phase Three in November, my anxiety levels immediately went through the roof. The three main reasons for this anxiety are health, choice, and student impact. As an asthmatic, the idea of going back in a person during a global pandemic that involves a respiratory illness scares me. And as much as I want to see my students and my colleagues, the fear of possibly coming into contact with someone who unknowingly has COVID is real for any teacher, staff member, and student that is considered high risk. This leads me to my second reason for the anxiety, the choice I may have to make. If the rumor mill is true, then teachers will be given a choice to either go face-to-face or stay virtual. If we go face-to-face, we get to keep our class. If we remain virtual, then we lose our class. We lose our students that we have spent weeks getting to know and have built relationships, bonds, and trust with. I love and adore my students. And while virtual learning is not the ideal situation, we are making it work the best that we can. My students continue to amaze me every day with their resilience, persistence, kindness, and patience. And yes, there have been a few bumps here and there, but we are able to push on because we know that we are in this together. We continue to learn through singing, movement, discussion, art, games, play, and exploration. My kids are even writing at this point. All approaches that we are using are developmentally appropriate. And lastly, I have extreme anxiety over the learning experience my students will have if we go back face-to-face too soon. Research will tell you that our youngest learners learn best through play, movement, music, interaction, and hands-on exploration. If we go back face-to-face where we have to follow strict safety measures, the majority of what we know to be developmentally appropriate will be unusable. Instead, it will be replaced with our students trying to sit in a desk for the majority of their school day, six feet from the friends that they just want to play with, looking at the toys that they can't play with. There will be no group exploration of dirt or games of chase on the playground. If we aren't able to teach our students in the best way we know how, just so they can stay safe, then what kind of education are we truly providing them with? And to ACPS, what is more important, keeping everyone safe while providing a developmentally appropriate education or simply putting warm bodies in a building where they will receive a mediocre education and run the risk of getting sick? Please fight for us and do what is right for everybody. Thank you for your time. And Katrina, thank you for saying my last name correctly. And Katrina, thank you for saying my last name correctly.
Katrina?
I'm here. I can see you mouthing my name.
I'm sorry. I was, one, accepting that compliment because I'm not usually good at doing last names. And then I was going to announce the remaining four speakers because that's all we have left. So it's going to be Maggie Johnson, followed by Andrew West, followed by Patricia McDonald, and then Jeff Handler, since he had fallen off before.
All right. Well, in that case, I am going to go ahead and start my time. My name is Maggie Johnson. I am the German 1 and 2 teacher at Monticello High School here in Albemarle County. I live in Charlottesville City, but I teach in the county, and I'm proud to. I'd like to first make it clear that my comments represent exclusively my own perspective and my own concerns. I do not claim to speak for any other teachers or any other staff or faculty in the county. I think it goes without saying that this virtual school year is not our ideal. I miss seeing my students. I am only in my second year of teaching, but I already have grown to love being in a physical classroom and being around students, and I miss them. And I miss the spontaneity of in-person teaching, and I miss being able to create a physical space to let my students learn and grow as people and within the boundaries of the language that I teach. But even considering the shortcomings of virtual education, the fact of the matter is that it is not safe for in-person instruction, even on a hybrid level. And it will not be safe to return to in-person instruction until there is an effective and accessible vaccine available. Put plainly, if we return to in-person schooling even on a hybrid schedule, people will become sick with COVID-19, and people will die of COVID-19 as a direct result of that decision. Instead of worrying about when and how to return to in-person instruction, I think that the school board and the county as a whole need to focus on how to facilitate the best possible online instruction. The questions of when and how to return to in-person classes should not even be considered until the CDC approves distribution of a vaccine, and that vaccine is made accessible to every person. Instead, I would like for the school board to focus their efforts solely on supporting teachers, staff, students, and families in the district with online education. I genuinely believe that if we accept that this is our reality for the foreseeable future instead of deluding ourselves with thinking we can return to in-person or hybrid for the 2020-21 year, we can learn powerful lessons in a county and as individuals to take into our instruction when it is safe. To emphasize that point of the minute I have left, I'd like to offer some improvements that I've already begun to see in my planning and teaching, even in these first three weeks of classes. Being limited to 45 minutes of direct synchronous instruction at the high school level means that I am making more deliberate intentional decisions about what, when, and how to teach material. This is allowing me to explore a flipped approach to my classes in which students take notes on grammatical structures or learn vocabulary asynchronously, and we then practice during synchronous classes. I am also able to focus more closely on students achieving proficiency and understanding with the material instead of feeling pressured to assign recorded graded exercises or assignments. The online format further means that I can explore new programs and technologies to incorporate into class such as Flipgrid or EdPuzzle, which I've already started to use Flipgrid in my classes to make learning more engaging and more accessible to every student. When the day comes that it's safe to return to in-person, I'll be able to use these technologies as part of my standard curriculum because I've had plenty of experience using them in a variety of ways. That's all of the time that I have, but I have submitted comments via email to the school board that I would like for you to please review when you're considering the next steps for the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Next up will be Mr. Andrew West.
Greetings. My name is Andrew West. I am a teacher in the Western Peter pattern. And I just wanted to ask a few questions and hopefully raise a few points about moving to a potentially hybrid situation. And right now, teachers are working really hard, as they have been and as they tend to always do. And we spent about a month with students and about two months planning. And we are still, you know, trying to make sure that we are doing everything we can and covering all of our bases without overtaxing the students. I'm worried that moving to a hybrid plan this soon while students are still figuring out how to handle the virtual plan would only confuse things even more. And I just wanted to make sure we have a few things hammered out before we actually move into a hybrid plan. And some things that I wanted to be aware of. Will we prepare the schools to be disinfected and clean? Or is that something a teacher is going to have to do? Is there going to be increased air ventilation in the classrooms, which already have poor ventilation as it is? Are there going to be more resources and structures for the teachers to handle doing an online class as well as an in-person class? Because there's a lot of resources right now are already being stretched to capacity, doing what we're doing as it is. So trying to do both seems like asking a lot. Are there going to be ways to ensure that students are actually abiding by the health protocols and not putting other people at risk? Are there going to be, will there be compensation for teachers who have children who are also in the hybrid plan, and they can't leave their children at home? And will there be compensation for teachers who have to come in to a hybrid plan and put themselves at risk if their colleagues can't come in? And I don't mean to sound accusatory. I don't mean to sound antagonistic. I just want to make sure that we've considered a lot of these things that need to happen before we can safely move into a hybrid plan. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate the work that you guys are putting into this and for hearing us out, because this is tense, and this is scary, and this is hard. And so I appreciate it. I yield my time.
Thank you for sharing that, Mr. West. Our next commenter will be Patricia McDonald.
Good evening. My name is Patricia McDonald, Ravanna District. At the last school board meeting, I raised my concerns that the five stages of return to school had no health criteria associated with them. Without these criteria, there's no context. At the beginning of each meeting, you all have the school board meeting. You all discuss to some great degree the various statistics and data regarding COVID-19 in the health district. Without the context of criteria for each of the return to school stages, this is all meaningless. It's mere theater. Clearly, the school board has decided it's safe for some students to return to school and also for the children of teachers and staff to return for childcare at the schools. So of course, there must have been some health standards for them to return to the school that the school board hasn't released. I'm requesting again that you somehow come up with criteria for each stage of return to school and publish it so that we can know how close or far away we are from being able to return to in-school learning, which I think we all agree is best for the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Our last speaker is going to be Mr. Jeff Handler. Mr. Handler, if you're on, it is your turn.
I am here, but I'm going to keep my camera off just in case I awkwardly freeze again because that isn't good for anyone. And I hope, swear, I wasn't trying to jerry-rig my way into the closing spot. That is just unfortunate. So I'll just sort of reiterate what I was saying. I'm a teacher at Mountain View Elementary School. I'm in the Scottsville District along with my two kids. And I know you've heard a little bit, but I do want to reiterate that things are going really well. I have a first grader, and I just did want to respond to Bo's comment about skill building. If we were in-person, Responsive Classroom says the first six weeks of school are all about building routine. So I don't think the education his child is receiving is any different than what he would be getting in the building. It takes six weeks to get to know your class, to build routines, and that's what's happening now. It just looks different, and it's on Zoom. And my first grader is having a wonderful time. I really think that it's important that before you vote, that I really think every school board member should attend meetings with the staffs at the schools that you represent. I appreciate Ellen and Graham are already going to be coming to Mountain View along with Dr. Haas and anyone else that wants to. I think hearing from the teachers is crucial. And unless you really make that transparent, I think that you're missing out on a huge piece of information that teachers can provide. We can let you know how things are going. We can let you know what in-person looks like at current status. We can talk about how we've problem-solved, and we can talk about how well things are going. And we can also, you will find out soon how many teachers will not be returning in-person until it's safe. I think you need to know that before voting. I also think that it's really important that transparency in the medical and in the teacher capacity is really evident before voting. I also want to say that as, in the same way that our school system, when we have a snow day, sort of even though some schools might have totally fine roads nearby, and you're thinking, man, why do we have a snow day? These roads are fine, but we've got those dirt roads way out in the county, and it's not safe for them. By the same token, I see one more minute. By the same token, at some schools that are much smaller, maybe they feel much more equipped to take on Phase 3. At my school, that would be 470 students would be eligible to come in for Phase 3. And that's just not sustainable. Right now, we have 15. So to go from 15 to 470 potential students is just, that's really a hard pill to swallow, and I don't know how we would do that. So I really think that getting to know your schools and really figuring out what each phase looks like is really important. So that's all. I really feel strongly that you know that Phase 2 is going well. And the biggest complaint I hear is the schedule, and I have some solutions to that if you'd like to hear them. But that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Handler. That concludes our public comment. I would just extend a thank you to everyone who took the time to share your comments with us. Chair Page, I hand it back over you.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair Carlson. We now have announcements. So are there any announcements?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Page. So I just have a great announcement to make. It's really exciting. Earlier today, the U.S. Department of Education announced their National Blue Ribbon Awards for Excellence in Academic Performance. For the first time in the program's 38-year history, a Virginia school has received the department's exemplary award for closing achievement gaps. I'm proud to say that our own Baker Butler is one of four schools in our state to meet the very high standards for this recognition. In fact, of the 1,800 schools in Virginia, only 58 even qualified in this category. The award covers three school years, beginning with 2016-17. Over this time period, SOL pass rates for English language learners, special education students, and students from economically disadvantaged homes increased by 87% for math and 78% in reading. Yes, those are increases, not the pass rate. This far exceeded the increase in overall pass rates of 15% in math and 11% in reading in Virginia. As a result, the achievement gap in reading was reduced from 24 down to 11 percentage points, and the gap in math fell from 16 percentage points to 6. These achievements will be featured in our Spotlight on Education during our October 8 meeting. But I would like to congratulate the outstanding and remarkably talented faculty, staff, students, families, and of course, previous principal Steve Saunders and current principal Seth Kennard for your outstanding work. This is a nationally renowned accomplishment. And as impressive as these numbers are, I know the school's motto will be, "The best is yet to come." Thank you.
Okay, that is really great news, Dr. Haas. Thank you so much for sharing it. That does let us know that what we are doing has started to work. So we have to continue on the path and even think of some other more innovative ways to try to close that achievement gap. So thanks again for reporting that to us. Is there any school board or superintendent business? I do have one thing, but any other school board members or superintendent with other business?
Mr. Page, we do not have anything that's not on the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, when we took the roll call at the very beginning of our session tonight, Ms. Burkhardt was not with us. So this is Malani's last night to serve as our school board rep on the board. So we do have this letter that we'll be sending out to Ms. Burkhardt along with a certificate that's worthy to be framed. And we really appreciate what Malani has done as our first representative on the school board as a student. So the letter says, "Dear Malani, in a year unlike any other in our school division's history, there have been several firsts, and one of them has been your service as our student representative to the school board. In establishing this role, our goal was to enhance the quality and effectiveness of decisions that directly impact students and their futures. We especially wanted to provide a direct link with students. You were that link. We especially valued your insight and counsel on such important decisions as the banning of hate images in schools, providing a safe and welcoming learning environment for all students, and the classroom challenges presented by the pandemic. In our policy, we said we wanted a student representative of exemplary character with high personal standards of conduct, a student who modeled the fulfillment of school policies and regulations, and a leader interested in school board governance. And Malani, you earned straight A's in all of those categories. Thank you for setting such a high standard for all who would succeed you. It was a pleasure to serve with you. Best wishes for a highly successful year at Monticello High and in all of your future endeavors. Stay safe." So Malani, do you have any comments that you would like to give to us here at this time?
Thank you so much, Mr. Page, but it's been an honor serving on the school board, especially as the first-term student representative. I've really enjoyed being part of the process, especially with school openings. I've enjoyed using my role to bring light to other students' opinions, especially during such a crucial time with virtual learning and virtual school. And I'm just really excited to see what the future student representatives do and how they take on the new challenges, especially with the rest of the school year. And just again, it's been an honor to serve. And it's really, thank you so much for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you so very much. Any other school board members would like to address any comments to Malani? I know we all appreciate what she has done.
Malani, Mr. Page and I have met all of the the six students who were coming in to be representatives or alternates in the balance of this school year. But I'm so pleased that you were our first. And in conversations, you are so on point with your questions. And in terms of, I know a project that you're working on that will hopefully be giving us some more data and feedback from students. You've taken this seriously, and I just want to say that I appreciate it. The whole board appreciates it. And best of wishes for the rest of this school year and beyond.
Thank you, Mr. Alcarro.
Just one more thing, Malani. I think I agree with everything that the letter and Mr. Alcarro said. I think once you have time to sort of step away from this role, it would be really helpful if you had any guidance or what worked best for you. Did you feel included? What could we have done as a school board to be more welcoming or more of a resource for you in understanding what was going on?
Malani, as your former employee, I've greatly enjoyed working for you on the school board. You have set the bar very high for future school board members, whether they are students or elected officials. You've been outstanding. Right now, we think about our portrait of a graduate and all of the critical thinking, problem-solving, the people skills, and the thinking ahead, the strategic thinking that we want our students to be able to do. All we need is your portrait. You already reflect our greatest aspiration as a school system. And you've engaged in a very high-level public service by taking on this role. I'm very proud of you, and I do look forward to seeing you graduate. And I'll see you again. I look forward to it. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you again, Malani. Our next student rep on the board is Will. Okay, so thank you again, Malani. Our next student rep, rep on the board is Will Trout. And I think Will is a student at, well, I'm gonna have to check back at my notes, but Will would be our next representative on the school board as a student rep.
He's at Monticello High School.
He's at Monticello. So he'll start serving at the October board meeting. And again, thanks so much, Malani. We are now ready for our work session. And first item in the work session, COVID-19 status update. Dr. McLaughlin, Ms. Gomez, and Mr. McKay.
Thank you and good evening, board members. I'm Pat McLaughlin, Chief of Strategic Planning for the School Division, and I'm here tonight to provide you with an update on our local COVID statistics. This evening, I'm joined by both Eileen Gomez and Ryan McKay, who is Senior Policy Analyst from the Thomas Jefferson Health District. Both Ryan and Eileen are incredibly well-versed in how COVID-19 is impacting our region, and they look forward to sharing their expertise with you tonight. As you recall, our return to school plan outlined multiple factors that we'll use to determine when we move forward with our next stage. Per your request, at each board meeting, we'll provide updates in regard to one of these factors, the current COVID-19 conditions in Albemarle County. All data that you see tonight has been provided by the Virginia Department of Health, and it's important to note that these statistics and trend data are one factor in determining the move forward or back in our return to school stages. It's recommended that the board continue to look at all factors collectively as these decisions are made. And at this time, I'll turn things over to Eileen and Ryan to take you through the latest statistics and answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. McLaughlin. I'm Eileen Gomez. I am the school nurse coordinator and the COVID coordinator this year for Albemarle County Public Schools. And I would like to take you through the latest updates on the metrics that we have gotten from the Virginia Department of Health. As you can see, this first slide is the seven-day floating average of the number of cases per 100,000 people. You see that the numbers have, well, they, they call this trend fluctuating, but the numbers are lower now than they were in the end of August. And overall, we've been seeing a downward trend with the, with the case burden or the floating average of the cases. The percent positivity rate for testing in Albemarle County has been steadily going down. You can see we're down at 3.6%, which is one of the lowest rates we've had at least all summer. That has been decreasing. Now, in the city of Charlottesville, it's a little bit different. We have been on an upward trend of number of cases. And some of that can be, I think most of the increase can be attributed to UVA cases. But we wanted to explain that the metrics we receive from the Virginia Department of Health are intended to provide a starting point for conversations and decision-making. We do not have absolute benchmarks for which people are clamoring. It is, we believe it's important to contextualize the data. For example, UVA does have an impact on the case counts in the city, but not so much on the county. Luckily, we have Ryan McKay with us this evening, and he can help explain some of this data and put it into some context and may be able to answer any questions you have. Ryan?
Thank you, Eileen. Appreciate that. So again, my name is Ryan McKay, Senior Policy Analyst for the Thomas Jefferson Health District. And one of the things that we've been looking at closely throughout the pandemic are a lot of the numbers as they relate to positivity rates, the raw data of case counts, and certainly the cases per 100,000, both on a daily basis but over the course of a 14-day period of time. And I think Eileen hits, hits the point very well in terms of context. So what goes into these numbers? What goes into the seven-day positivity trend of 3.6? There are a number of factors that we have to consider when it comes to decision-making, whether it's for schools, bringing students back, or implementing community-wide mitigation strategies that the Board of Supervisors implemented back in late July and early August. So part of that is understanding where we've been doing testing and where have the positive results come from. If we do a point prevalence survey in, let's say, a long-term care facility or at the regional jail, one of the things that we would look for are the total number of positives related to those. Those will drive up many of the numbers in our localities. For example, Fuana County was at about 3.2 to 3.4% just over a week ago, and now they're up over 7.4% positivity rate over the last seven days. We can attribute that to one event in the outbreak at the Fuana Correction Facility for Women. Similarly, we can identify increases based on relationships with the university and student transmission there. While we haven't really seen the huge uptick within the county, we can attribute some of the cases and the case incidence rate for 100,000 to students who live in the county or cases that are attributable to UVA in general. And so I think it's really important to understand what the background is to some of these testing rates. The other is, and I think it might be a little confusing, it, it sometimes is with the UVA, I'm sorry, the Charlottesville numbers, you notice that they're in bright red. It's at 48 per 100,000, but the positivity rate is below 5%, which is ideal for what we, we need to do as public health. What that tells us is there's massive amounts of testing going on, and that's not just limited to UVA testing students and faculty. That goes to community testing that's happening throughout Albemarle County and Charlottesville and then throughout the Health District on a daily and weekly basis. The more we test, the, the greater access that we provide to that testing and the more frequently we do that, the idea is that we want to find those cases. We want to make sure that we can isolate individuals who test positive, that we can identify their close contacts, those who are within six feet for more than 15 minutes at a time, who may need to quarantine and monitor for symptoms themselves. And that's really critical because from our perspective, we want to make contact with those individuals within 24 hours. The more we can do that, the more likely it is that we can contain, not just mitigate, difference being mitigation slows the spread, containing stops it. From our perspective, one of the important data points that isn't necessarily publicly released is our ability to do that within 24 hours. And we feel pretty confident that we can do that consistently at or above the 90, 95% rate. So I think the context behind the data is important, and as Eileen mentioned, it's a starting point for a broader discussion to determine what, what the risk may be. We heard often tonight about safe, and I think that's really hard to define. What we can better define is potential risk involved. And what are we doing, not just relation to positivity rates and the case counts, but what are we doing holistically as a community to mitigate and minimize risk? It goes to wearing the face masks, physically distancing, doing symptom checks as a whole system as opposed to just focusing on what the percent positivities are. We have examples within our Health District and within the state of schools that have opened at varying levels of positivity rates, at varying levels of cases per 100,000. And I think what it's important is to, yes, look at those data points as a, as a part of the conversation, but also understand what the ability is of a school system to implement the strategies that are going to reduce and minimize risk to the greatest extent possible. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions about the data, about indicators, and any other questions you have about COVID-19 from the public health perspective.
Thank you, Mr. McKay. Are there any questions from the board for either Ms. Gomez or Mr. McKay?
I had a question about access to information for the schools that have opened. Mr. McKay mentioned how that's an important factor to look at. Patrick, what progress are we making in terms of having more to say about how that's going? I mean, I just read about it in the paper, basically, is how I find out what's going on with those schools.
And I think Ryan can probably speak to that a little bit better than I can. We do still have a weekly meeting with most of the local public and private schools who are in our area and, and get some reports from them. And I know some of that information is still embargoed, but Ryan, perhaps you could speak to that a little bit?
Yes, so I can, I can probably jump in the gun a little bit here, but beginning tomorrow, we'll be able to report breakouts of outbreak data, not just in terms of a global educational category, but break that down into different levels. And so we would be able to provide at least that level of data. In terms of exact numbers, we'll certainly look into what we can provide, and VDH may be able to say, yes, you can break that down into cumulative numbers. It wouldn't be at a current, with the current number of outbreaks or the current number of cases within a school that occurred associated with that outbreak. But we will be able to at least show the cumulative number of outbreaks on our public-facing dashboard. I think the other part of that is, in those weekly calls, as school systems have reported that a case has occurred based on media reports, they've been asked to share details in terms of how was the process to identify close contacts? What were the lessons learned from those experiences? And then we can also share about process and procedure and protocol so that other school systems can learn from those responses to those individual cases and then make adjustments accordingly based on their own plans. So that's been a pretty informative piece that the qualitative part of all of this is also just as important as the quantitative.
Mr. McKay and Ms. Gomez, the last time we spoke, the, the numbers for Charlottesville were bright red, and a big part of that was attributed to, to UVA. And, and I had asked you whether or not, well, if you were expecting some impact on our numbers based on the fact that a lot of the UVA students live in Albemarle County. By looking at the numbers tonight compared to last time, there doesn't seem to be much of a change in terms of an impact from that particular source. Is it been, can you cast any light on why that might be?
Well, I, I'm assuming that the cases that, that we can attribute to UVA have not, they maybe stayed amongst themselves and haven't really spread out to the community because we really haven't seen an increase in numbers up here in Albemarle County. Would you say, Ryan, that that might explain that?
To our knowledge, we haven't experienced transmission that's occurred between, directly related between the UVA-affiliated students and the community at large, whether that's in Charlottesville or Albemarle County. That's not to say it can occur, or maybe it's occurred and we just haven't been aware yet. But the impact of UVA coming back to grounds has been less impactful on the county than it has been on the city. And I think for the city, it's that there are so many students, and far more students that are living off grounds than on grounds, which has changed that a little bit, and that there's the ability to isolate and quarantine in off-ground housing. It's, it's more difficult than it is to do so on grounds.
Mr. McKay, last time too, I, I asked you the question about COVID-wise and, and how that has been working for, for lack of a better term. Is, is that program progressing in, in line with what was hoped for it?
You know, I can't answer that question. I know we've had significant increases in downloads, but as far as locally, I'm not aware of, of use of COVID-wise related to any of our case investigations or contact tracing. Certainly happy to get more information in terms of the state level or other localities experience something different, but at least locally, I'm not aware of the use of the app related to case investigations or contact tracing.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McKay, do we have any prevalence data that's finer-grained than Albemarle County? Say, for example, the urban ring or, and then beyond, or how, how do you keep track of that data?
Some of the data that we use and track is through our surveillance system. It's called VIDS. It allows us to really identify where cases are occurring based on home address. We are able to do internally mapping in, in to identify clusters and potential hotspots. That data, we can't make public because it involves addresses. We use that as an opportunity to potentially determine different strategies based on the location of those clusters or potential outbreaks. We use them to determine where we may need to identify testing locations and conduct outreach in terms of information and education about COVID, ways to minimize and reduce risk, and certainly minimize spread. There are zip code level data available through a couple of different sites that can be found. It makes it a little challenging because zip codes in Albemarle County can range from a zip code that includes a large section of Charlottesville and Albemarle, but it's the most granular data I think would be publicly available for review.
Thank you.
Are there other questions from the board?
Mr. McKay, perhaps this is stepping outside of what you do because I know it's very data-driven, but I guess, do you do any analysis of risk? I know you mentioned safe is kind of a subjective word and moving target, but we can mitigate risk. And so I guess I'm asking if you have an opinion, which you might not, about, for example, are schools able to have a low, able to mitigate risk in a way that makes them, makes it, sorry, I have my screen is making it hard to see. I'm not a fan of these Zoom meetings. I'm like trying to minimize and it's like maximizing, like talking into my blank screen. I guess I'm just asking if there's a way for you to provide an opinion on whether you think that schools are a place where risk would be low or where we could conceivably make risk lower. Do you not do that type of analysis? Because it's hard as a board member and someone without a health background to just see the numbers and, and feel like we need to make the decision based on the numbers. I would appreciate your opinion if you could provide it.
Of course, yes. I believe there is, there are ways that it can be done. I've, I've seen it. I, I visited Louisa County Public Schools about two weeks ago and got a tour of their middle and high school from their superintendent Doug Straley, who showed me every step of the way of how they have worked to minimize and reduce risk to the extent possible, from the screening procedures that they have, how they do symptom checks and temperature checks, how they have students enter various parts of the building based on grade level, and how they cohort students. And I will say, a lot of what's occurred and what we're hearing is that this is pretty common across Virginia, is that they're able to decompress the number of students who are doing in-person education. So they had about a one-third of parents decide to keep students home for full virtual education. So that left them with two-thirds of their school system attending school in person. I believe they're on an A-B schedule. And so while school doesn't look like school in terms of the numbers and what a classroom looks like, they have been very successful at bringing students back, implementing policies such as face masks, putting markers on the floor, stickers on the floor as reminders of how to do physical and social distancing. Six feet can be sort of hard to navigate if you're standing in a line without that visual reference. So the, the strategies they put in at both levels have been pretty remarkable to see. And I'll be honest, I had a hard time getting my head around what a school looks like during COVID and how you can minimize risk to the extent possible. And they've done a tremendous job. And they've also had some strong protocols as it relates to what happens if we've identified an individual with COVID who's a, a member of the school community. What do we do in terms of information sharing, contact tracing, and then education following that to ensure that we've identified as public health all the people that may have been a close contact and that we've done everything we can to contain potential spread. And so they've been a very good example. You know, Green County opened a couple of weeks ago. My understanding is Dr. Haas talked to Andrea Whitmarsh, their superintendent, and we've heard nothing but good things there. In fact, Green County visited Louisa County just to get an idea of what was happening. And they've been, they've been very open about what didn't necessarily work to begin with and what they've adjusted on the fly to make those operations, again, with low risk or minimizing risk to the extent possible. And I will say, it's important to, to keep in mind that as schools open, whether it's Albemarle County or Charlottesville or anywhere in Virginia, we have to anticipate there may be a case that emerges. And we have to understand that our response to that is going to impact whether or not we contain spread, mitigate spread, or if spread moves forward. And so that planning process, that constant review of those plans and learning for others, from others, along with looking at the community data, is going to be an ongoing process. It's evolving. But again, to reiterate to your original question, yes, I believe it can be done in, in a way that minimizes risk to the extent possible, as long as there's a sort of a systems approach to that in combination with what we can provide and share through data and context around that data.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, are there any other questions? Nat, thank you, Dr. McLaughlin, Mrs. Gomez, and Mr. McKay for
And and Mr. Page, if I may, just uh before we close, I'd really like to say uh a huge thank you to Ryan. He has been incredibly generous with his time um ever since we uh really ever since the outbreak uh began. Uh and and we just want to thank him for taking the time to be here tonight. He has always been responsive and and willing to come uh and meet with us um whenever we've asked. So thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah. On behalf of the board, thank you, Mr. McKay. Thank you to the rest of that group. We are now ready for our capital improvement program and long-range planning uh work session highlighted or headlined rather by uh Rosalind Schmidt. And we also, I think, have the Long Range Planning Committee members here with us tonight. So we really appreciate that committee being in our presence. But Ms. Schmidt, we are ready
Thank you, Mr. Page. So I actually get to hand it over pretty quickly. Uh Maya Kumazawa is our Director of Planning and Budget, and she will facilitate this work session. As it's titled, it's about our capital improvement program, uh which is our long-range planning. But we've done a nice, hopefully, job of organizing this in three chunks. Uh and Maya will explain those. And as you mentioned, Mr. Page, um representatives from the Long Range Planning Advisory Committee are here with us and will join us on the third part of that. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, school board members. Um thanks, Rosalind, for the introduction. So I will jump right into our um agenda for today. Um our work session will be divided into three sections based on our desired targets. And they are to understand the COVID nineteen impacts on the CIP process and current appropriation, to prepare you all for the Joint Board of Supervisors Work Session that's scheduled for October twenty first. And then finally, to provide guidance to the Long Range Planning Advisory Committee for long-term facilities planning. As you can see, the first part will be for information. Um I will pause for questions after the first session. And then the second and the third sections really are um discussions for you all to discuss amongst each other with staff and the committee members um about capital projects. Before we begin, I want to clarify our multi-year CIP process. Um this is important, particularly this year, as we will be making more decisions than we would in a typical year um about capital projects. Um the first part of the projects are FY twenty twenty, so that's last fiscal year's carryforward projects. So any previously adopted um and appropriated projects can be carried over if those projects are not complete into the current FY twenty one fiscal year. In a typical year, that happens um automatically if the project isn't finished. Uh but this year, you will see that it wasn't completely automatic. Then we have the FY twenty twenty one capital budget. That's the current year we're in. Um that budget was adopted last spring and the funds for that were appropriated. However, there may be um budget amendments in the current year that adjust uh the budget that was adopted back in the spring based on um a better revenue picture that we um not necessarily a better revenue picture, but better revenue information that we will get later this year. Next, we have the FY twenty two capital budget, which is next year's capital budget. And uh we plan for that during the uh budget planning process the year before. So this is the year um that we are planning for next year's capital budget. In addition, we will also be planning for um through FY twenty twenty five, we will not be adding a fifth year to our previously adopted five-year capital program, CIP. And instead, we will just shift forward a year and uh plan a four-year CIP. That is the current plan. And then the year after that is the fiscal year twenty three um and beyond period. This is really what uh we're calling the long-range planning aspect. And this is what the Long Range Planning Advisor Committee is currently focused on. You may remember that last year, we designed um a more transparent and streamlined process for um the CIP decision-making. We worked very closely with local government um and aligned a lot of our meetings and decision points. It was a very successful bu- budget process. Um and I'm sure you will see this again um during the next budget cycle when we plan for FY twenty three. For planning for FY twenty two purposes, since it is a CIP amendment year and we're in an unusual year, um our process will look uh quite different, and I'll go over that um a little bit later. This a different se- topic areas. The ones that were approved by the, not approved, but recommended in the um county executive's recommended budget are highlighted here in red. So that's the Croze addition and improvements and the Mountain View expansion and site improvements. And that recommended budget was um put forward in February of twenty twenty, so right before the pandemic. I want to next turn you to an update on um where we are with our current budget and appropriation um in order to understand the baseline from which we're working from. As you know, our maintenance and replacement program is broken out into three categories. They are school bus, facilities, and technology. For school bus replacement, our um full remaining balance from last year was carried forward. But as you can see, um the FY twenty one budget has been reduced from what was originally recommended in the um February budget, uh recommended budget. The main change would just be that um the replacement cycle for school buses is now delayed. Um we are able to move forward with a couple um essential purchases with the amount that was appropriated. For facilities maintenance, um the the balance that was remaining from the previous year, some of that was cut with only um essential projects moving forward. And that same justification was used to reduce the FY twenty one budget um between the recommended and the adopted. As you can see, um technology projects are fully funded at this point. This next list are the one-time CIP projects. Um the the majority of these, as you can see, are FY twenty or projects that were previously appropriated. Um the list that says unfunded, that was the amount that may in a typical year be carried forward and re-appropriated into the are able to get more information later in the year. The column that
You froze just a minute. Can you?
Oh, sorry. Should I start the slide again?
I don't think you have to start the whole thing.
Okay.
I think it was about halfway through, uh Maya.
Sorry. The 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 column labeled funded were the amounts um from FY twenty that were able to be carried over from um FY twenty into FY twenty one. So the so those are the amounts that are currently appropriated and we have the authority to spend um on those programs. We will get into some of these projects a little bit later, but um at the top, you do see the FY twenty projects. The FY twenty one projects is the only project there is the Croze addition. That project was uh originally in the recommended budget uh back in February. But when the budget was revised for adoption, um that project was not included. However, the design for that was already funded. Um so those monies have been appropriated for the current year. So I'm gonna turn these next few slides over to Rosalind.
Thank you. Um so I'm just gonna highlight three of those uh bigger projects just to give you a little more information on them. The first is High School Center Two. As it was stated in that last slide, um the design money for that project was carried forward, but the construction as of this point has not. So that's a decision point that um the school board and the Board of Supervisors have to make. And I draw your attention to that because as the schedule that we have outlined for that, we have um bidding and construction um starting uh next summer. And so what that means is that if this part, the construction money for this project does not get um added to the FY twenty one budget, this project would be delayed. Um the next slide, similarly with the Croze addition. Uh we have, do have design underway. The next slide, yeah. Um uh design underway, you will see the design develop. You approve the schematic in July and you'll see the design development portion of that project uh at your next meeting in October. And as you will see, to keep this project on schedule, uh we would need to bid and contract uh in the January, February timeframe twenty twenty one. So again, if the FY twenty one budget does not get amended to include the construction, which it does not have right now, this project would also be delayed. And then the third project, I just want to keep on our forefront as well as the Mountain View expansion. So that was originally in the recommended CIP for FY twenty two. And then when everything was revised, it was taken out. So uh as you recall in Maya's timeline, decisions for this year are going to affect both twenty one and twenty two. Um so we want to make sure that this project doesn't get lost in the shuffle as well. And I share that uh all knowing that um those are very large projects and we know that revenues will certainly be uncertain uh and limited. So um yeah, we have to be realistic about it, but I did want to make sure that we keep all of these projects in addition to our maintenance replacement uh restoration on our radar.
Thanks, Rosalind. Um I'm going to shift gears a little bit now to uh student enrollment. Um these numbers here, I'll go through each column, but the first column is showing our original uh capacity calculations. We have not adjusted those for K twelve. Um the second column here is showing the September ninth um actual enrollment data, which was shared with you earlier this month. The third column is showing the of the original projections for the current year. So what we thought um we were gonna get in terms of enrollment for this fall. And then the last column is showing um the fifth year of that, those original projections. The purpose of this is to show you that um while our enrollment is lower currently than what we anticipated and it's still fluctuating every day, there are still uh some schools that are noted in red where the enrollment does exceed the current capacity. So I'll just give you a minute to look at that. The um Red Hill and Scottsville capacities do include the uh additional space as a regal, result of the current renovations. So looking forward, um we have begun the planning process for developing enrollment projections, our ten-year enrollment projections. Um we we have decided at this time, as you know, we are pushing the entire uh operating budget process. We're delaying that but by about a month for each step of the way. So we are gonna mirror that in the enrollment projections. Um that extra time will buy us more time to collect more data and to really look at our methodology to see what will be mo- most appropriate to move forward with these projections. I think most importantly, we will, we will be working with a lot of our partners, which we have previously, but there will be um a special focus on this year. So that'll be the Weldon Cooper Center, who we've worked with in the past to develop enrollment projections. We will make sure to um connect with principals and OAs who know um the most what's happening in their schools and their communities. We're gonna do a deep dive with the Long Range Planning Advisory Committee um about what our methodology will be. And as always, we will partner closely with the community, Community Development Department um and local gov, and we will turn to industry best practices or as much as um they can be developed um throughout this fall and winter. We will do a deep analysis by school, by grade level, um by feeder patterns to really um determine, to really understand what happened this year, and we will uh do as much uh data collection as we possibly can. And then finally, uh it will, we will flex where we are currently and then an upper end that better reflects um our status quo where we would have been um before the pandemic. And again, the the focus for the range will be that we may use diff- a different set of projections, whether it's um for operating resource allocations for the short term or whether it's uh facilities planning for the long term. We'll sort of need that wiggle room and that range to really make the best decisions. So that's the first part of um the agenda to understand where we are and what's happening. So I'll pause here um for any clarifying questions that you may have.
Any other? I am, I I just have a a quick question, and that is, I'm not arguing the validity of some of the decisions that were made ala uh Croze addition and pushing that back. Um center two and pushing that back. When were were these decisions made? I I I don't recall hearing about it before uh tonight. Were, have these just been made uh in the last month? Or were were these made, you know, late last spring?
Rosalind, do you wanna? Sure, I'll take that. So we uh met pretty collaboratively uh early on in the spring with the county staff. Uh it was probably the April timeframe and knowing there was such revenue uncertainty, we put a pause on as many projects as we could. So let's take the center two example. We knew that we wouldn't need the construction money uh anytime soon, so it was paused. And same with the Croze, and that's why they, we were able to fund the design and not the construction. And the decision at that point was to revisit it midway through FY twenty one. So there is not, has not formally been a decision to delay. I just wanted to draw your attention that if we don't amend this current budget to include those projects, they will get delayed. But the decision in April was to advance only the money we needed to keep those projects on schedule. Does that make sense?
It does, and and that that's much more clear. Um and just to be, one other question is on the page, current appropriations for FY twenty one projects with the Croze addition and the FY twenty projects. Um I I just noticed and 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 we've talked about it, but that the uh Mountain View project was not included in this, in this, in this particular slide, at least the one I've got.
So the um the adopted budget was for FY twenty one. And so technically, while we do adopt a five-year CIP, the only the first year as part of the capital budget is technically adopted. So the Mountain View expansion was planned for FY twenty two and was part of the five-year CIP, but it's technically not adopted or appropriated until we get to that year.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Are there other questions on uh se- section one of this presentation?
Okay, and we will move on. Um before we jump into um your discussion, um this is a quick uh budget process for um our current year. So as you can see, today is our first meeting on the CIP. And hopefully, the conversations that you have today will better prepare you in having a discussion with the Board of Supervisors that's scheduled in October. Um in November, the CIP Advisory Committee that was formed last year will convene um and make a recommendation um to the county executive for consideration for his recommended budget. And as we've talked about um this evening, the um discussion points and decision points will not only include FY twenty two like it would in a typical year. Um the FY twenty carryforwards, the FY twenty one amended capital budget, if there are amendments. Um and then in addition to the FY twenty two capital budget and the four-year CIP following that. So these are all going to be sort of discussed and um considered as a whole group, which is a change from previous years. So we're gonna divide up the school board into two smaller groups um to make it a little bit easier to communicate with each other. And um we'd like to guy, hear some guiding questions for you. What should be our high-level focus be for this year's process? So this is thinking short term for FY twenty one and FY twenty two. Um we're hoping that you'll discuss why you think that area of focus is important. Um or maybe it's that you need more information that we can provide you over the next month. So um these are, these are the groups. So these are, these are the groups. We have discovered a collaborative tool called Jamboard. We'll be sharing that link with you. And in order, it's basically a virtual way to have, you know, a poster with stickies and notes the way you would in a in a real word, in a real work session. Hopefully, you will find that interesting. We will have staff in each of the groups to help facilitate if you have any questions. So at that point, I think, Jennifer, we are ready for our groups. Okay. So if you get a little pop-up, just follow your little pop-up and go to that room. Is Jennifer, can you, okay, I think, is that everybody?
Hey Maya, am I able to, can you pop me into one of the groups?
I can send you into one, Matt.
Oh, thanks. And then how long, how long will they be in the groups, Jennifer?
20 minutes.
So can you send me, there's just two groups, right?
Correct.
So can you send me into one for 10? And then I'll come out and then you can send me in the other one?
Sure.
Thanks.
Jennifer, can you put me in the other breakout room?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Welcome back, everybody. Is the other group here? Okay. So I think Group One should start and maybe just take two minutes to tell the rest of the school board and the public a little bit about what was discussed. So Jono, you want to take it away? Oh, you're muted.
Let me just come in and squint. If it can be enlarged, that'd be great. But so in terms of what we were looking at for our focus for this year's budget, we talked about a lot of things. Maybe I can't read, but you know, focus on Center Two, if it's going to be purely capacity. There's an importance to to Croze Elementary and to Mountain View because they're busting at the seams. And so let me just take that down. And it all came down to money for, well, for me, that if we had the money to work with in order to work on capacity, that if we didn't, yeah, no, we would work on capacity. But if we didn't, then potentially modernization of our existing facilities could be a place to put our CIP money for a year and hopefully get back up to you know, to the regular numbers. But the big, the number one thing and the big idea that was, you know, we got to solve capacity issues. We talked about a number of things, you know, in there. One of the reasons for the school Center Two was that it was promised on the 2016 school referendum because if we all remember, that was in addition to the Woodbury Project, it was the big project to be able to provide relief from a capacity for Almaral High School and Western Almaral High School. And that we're still going to need that capacity release. And then and one point that was made that was so important is that space is increasingly important during the pandemic because of the spacing needs. And you know, and if we don't have the capacity, we can't do that. And if we could just slide it over, I could see what that last line was. Or is this the last we have?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. That's the basis of ours is capacity, modernization, if we don't have the money, and then the reasons for those.
Group two?
I can speak if you want. I can't read Ellen's face or Graham. Do you all want to speak?
No, we'll let you.
Go ahead.
Ellen wants to speak.
No, go ahead.
So I would say, I think on the Jono's slide, Group One's slide, the big idea was solving capacity issues. And I think we would be in agreement with that for this year, given that there are so many unknowns and uncertainty in whether there is even going to be any money forthcoming. That would be the focus that we had is just making sure we have space for our students in our most overcrowded areas. That being said, we, well, we had topics for the long range planning. So that's actually for the next section. We did have a few discussions. Center Two was not as high on our priority list overall. We also, a little contrary to what Group One said about how spacing is increasingly important, we actually were having some conversations about how schooling might look different in the future, given the long range impacts of COVID and virtual learning and the opportunities that have kind of opened up with that. And so I think in our minds, we were kind of focusing more on the elementary schools. And I would be remiss if I didn't say, particularly in the Southern Peter pattern. Graham. So I hope that's a good one minute summary. If anyone wants to add anything else on, they may.
All right. Thank you. I think both groups were starting to talk more long range because I think in some cases that's the long range is more certain than the short term, which is really backwards. But I, so it's a really good point to, I think, go to the next part of our work session. So our last part of the discussion again will be with the Long Range Planning Advisor Committee members. I want to thank those that are here. They have been online since the beginning of the meeting at 6:30. So thank you. Just as a quick reminder, the Long Range Planning Advisory Committee exists to inform and advise both the school board and the superintendent in developing a long-term facilities planning needs. Over on the right, you see some examples of the topics that they are charged with. If you want to get a sense of the scope, you can see the scope is pretty large and creative. And I know that Group One even started talking about some of that. So I think that this year, this committee is going to be very important in providing you with recommendations next summer. But to begin with, the committee is looking for you all to provide guidance to them. As we just started meeting for the school year, we will meet for the full school year and come back to you with whatever guidance that you have given them. Here are the members most, I think, present. So if you all could maybe unmute and whoops, unmute and turn your videos on and just give a quick introduction to yourself to both the school board and the public so that we know who you are for those in attendance today. We can go down this order, but is Kate on Kate package? Don't.
No.
Okay.
Dave? Sure. In that case, I'm David Storm, Representative of the Scottsville District. This is my second cycle through this. I have a third grader and a first grader at Mountain View with a four-year-old chomping at the bit to join them next year. Thanks.
Hi, I'm DJ Stobel. I am new to the Long Range Planning Advisory Committee. I am in the Whitehall Magisterial District. I've been a ACPS parent since 2009 and I have a child at Western Almaral High School.
Hi, I'm Gail Lovett. I am the at-large representative. This is my second cycle. I have a third grader and a first grader at Agnor Hert and a pre-Ker who will be entering next year.
Hi, my name is Kate Barrett. I am a superintendent appointee. I think it's my second or third cycle. I've also served on a couple of our redistricting committees in previous years. And I am looking forward to hearing what the school board has in terms of preferences and in store for our committee.
Thanks, guys, and thanks for being here and your patience. The other people who couldn't make it tonight, but who are on the committee are listed at the bottom of the slide. If you are interested or want to reach out, this is the whole committee as it stands right now. So as I said, this section is also what types?
You're frozen again. We didn't hear what you said.
I'm sorry. This cycle and then you froze.
Right.
I'm sorry. Don't. So we will have three groups to discuss, for you to discuss with the Long Range Planning Committee. Here are some guiding questions. So what are your areas of concern? What types of projects are your highest priority? So this is a good follow-up to your last discussion. And what topics would you like for the committee to research? And the point at the end of the conversation, we'd like you to come back and as a group, pick three topics that you specifically want to see show up in the report when the committee next comes back in front of you. So you can start broad with these larger topics. And then if you could hone in on the top three projects that you can agree on as a group, that would be great to hear from everybody when we get back together. And there's no jam board this time. We'll just have a free flowing discussion for everybody there. Any questions? So here are the groups. Jennifer, whenever you're ready, can you pop us out of here?
Yes. 20 minutes again, right?
Kate was like, let's summarize the whole thing and then I accidentally. Hit return, I'm sorry Kate.
All of a sudden.
You're gonna wind down the session or?
Yeah. So I'm hoping that you all found the discussion with your fellow long range planning committee members useful. I think at this point, it's been a, it's been a long work session and everyone's great, gave a lot of great input. I think what we'll have the planners do is come back to our next committee meeting in October and share with the rest of the committee what was talked about in your small groups. And then the committee will come up with what those top three were and sort of consolidate them. And we would bring that back to the school board as a consent item for consideration. Is that, does that sound like an okay plan with everyone?
Okay, consent when? In October, first meeting or second meeting to win?
Or maybe by November.
It would probably be the second meeting. I think the committee meets the second week of October, so it's not before the eighth. But I think with the time left, if we could just quickly say to the public here's what was discussed, maybe just say the, the three topics. I know my group has five, just real quickly so that the public can hear it. And then the committee will go back and, and probably analyze what's realistic for the next year or two. And then pitch that back to you just to get some agreement on.
Okay.
I'll go ahead from our group, Mr. Page.
Okay, yeah, Mrs. Strong. Yeah, that's good.
Our, our three primary items were solving capacity issues, whether at the elementary school or the high school level with regard to what happens with Center Two in particular and how that may impact the overcrowding at some of the high schools, also the capacity issues. Once we follow out with what happens with both Croze and Mountain View and then looking at whatever else comes next with that. Second piece was modernizing our existing facilities, both to take advantage of modern technology, modern teaching techniques, but also to be able to deal with whatever the next Black Swan event is, whatever the next pandemic type thing might be. So we can be better prepared if we can, right? So it's, it's just one of those things. And then lastly, to try and do it with an eye toward equity, to make sure that all our students are getting the, the best opportunity they can to start once they get into that building, once they get into whatever facility we happen to be using for them. So that we're not, everybody's got the best opportunity to succeed.
I can report out of ours too. We had many of the same. We talked about solving capacity issues. We talked about equitable access to space. And we also talked about that including LGBTQ students. If we're talking about the, sort of the building facilities part of that. We talked about clean buildings, sustainability projects. And we also talked about flexibility for the future, if that, you know, is sort of out of the box thinking in terms of mixing virtual learning with in-person learning, possibly as a way to solve capacity issues. That was, that's a possibility. And then we, I, we had a fifth. I don't recall the fifth. I'm sorry, Rosalyn. Could you help me with that?
Well, the fifth, and I got it brought up because we were debating a little bit whether it should be this committee or not. But there was a conversation around rethinking schedules, whether year-round schooling and the COVID slide and those types of topics, which I think are all on the front of our radar right now, but may or may not be in the purview of this committees. But we did want to bring it up in the larger group.
Anna, did I miss anything?
I guess I'm the other one. I, I think probably our highest priority was looking at capacity, but really more focused on Mountain View, which is almost 800 students and looking at, last year, the, the Long Range Planning Committee talked about a middle school study. It was on our to-do list. We haven't done it. But with Mountain View, close to 700 students and without space to expand, we actually do need to tackle that problem area at some point. So that's, what is the right size for elementary schools? What are, what are we going to do about Mountain View and how does that fit in with the study of our middle schools? And then because I, I think there's an opportunity to look prospectively, it is long range planning, is, I would like the Long Range Planning Committee to consider looking at the Lamb's Lane campus. It is with the school, with Albemarle, Greer, Jack Jewett, and soon to be a Boys and Girls Club. It has terrible traffic patterns. It has both the transportation and gas station and building services. But there's an opportunity, I think, to rethink that campus and look at what it could be, even if it's not tomorrow, if it's a 10-year plan. How could we improve that campus and maybe take advantage of some of the parcels that we have proffered to the county, the schools? So it'd be a solve these problems and here's prospectively something we can build on.
So in short, pretty easy.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the group is up to the task. They, they have committed to stay here at 9:00 PM.
9:00 PM, we thank you for that.
We do, we really do.
So thank you, school board members, for providing the guidance. I think it'll be really helpful as we begin our process.
Just the feedback to you, Maya. It was really good, actually, having these groups with the Long Range Planning Committee members. Because we usually are just up there at the front saying, do this and come back with us. So it was good. Good idea, who's ever, whose ever idea it was.
Yeah, that was great.
Right. So thanks, Maya, and also thanks to the Long Range Planning Committee members who were with us tonight. Is that it, Maya, anymore?
That's it.
Okay, all right. So we are down to other business from board members or the superintendent. Any other business for tonight?
I, I did have one question. It, it's related to our COVID discussion before, but I did not think it was for Nurse Gomez or Mr. McKay. I, I know that we talked about how UVA students, you know, they're having the cases increase their UVA and that it doesn't really affect us here in the county. But I'm curious about the count of UVA students that we have in, working in our schools. Who would be working in our schools if we open them back up? So I think that that's a, one of a Dr. Kaiser question.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Lee. At this point, we, we have 96 student teachers, practicum students and, and others across our school division, across the school division, not just from UVA. We have five primary schools that they come from and a few sundry little ones. Tomorrow, Dr. Daphne Kaiser is going to get me the breakdown specifically from UVA. We'll also look at the breakdown by level, elementary, middle and high school as well, to be able to give you that information. And we will email that to you.
Thank you. Sure.
Thank you.
And we do, we, staff does not have any other business. I, I do want to thank the Long Range Planning Advisory Committee members for, for being here tonight. That was really great to have you all. Thank you.
Yes, thanks again. Any other business from board members or our superintendent?
You know, only just good wishes to Malani. Thank you again for being with us and just the best of luck in the future.
Right, you sort of stole that from me. Maybe I should have gone ahead and said it. But okay, yeah, Malani, thank you so much for everything that you've done. And we will be sending that certificate suitable for framing out to you very, very soon to show our appreciation. So thanks so much.
I think, I think Jennifer's getting it framed though.
Maybe we should, maybe we should just frame it.
I stand corrected. I said corrected, already framed.
Yeah, she had it framed today, so.
Jennifer, is it framed?
It will be.
Okay, framed, all right.
Handsomely shaped, framed.
Right, so Malani, all you have to do is find a good wall to hang it on, right? All right, so there being no other business then, our meeting for tonight is adjourned. And again, we appreciate the staff presentations and Long Range Planning Committee. So thank you all and now meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.